So, สวัสดีครับนี่คือศิลป์ซีนครับคุณผู้หญิงและผู้ชายขอบคุณที่เข้าร่วมการพูดคุยกันในวันนี้ฉันนินะผู้นำของหุ่นส่วนทางการแพทย์ของโรงพยาบาลจังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์ฉันก็เป็นผู้นำในวันนี้จากประเทศต่างๆและขอบคุณมากสำหรับสอง VIP หนึ่งเป็นดร.วอค ผู้กำกับของ Association Taiwan Nurses และอีกหนึ่งเป็นคุณคุณซีรีมาผู้นำของ Division Nursing ของ Ministry of Public Health Thailand วันนี้เป็นการพูดคุยกันที่สำคัญมากฉันรู้ว่าในช่วงการพิมพ์有很多的线上会议ที่เปิดให้เป็นของประเทศต่างๆและทุกองค์กรเพื่อจะแบ่งปันความประสบการณ์ against COVID-19 แต่ฉันพบว่าที่นี่เป็นเว็บไซต์ที่มีความจำกัดที่จะ重点讨论ความสำคัญและบทบาทของพยาบาลในการต่อสู้กับการพิมพ์ดังนั้นเราจึงเปิดนักเรียนที่เป็นการพูดคุยกันโรงเรียนจากไทยอินโดนีเซียเมมโมร์และประเทศอเมริกาอื่นๆที่เข้าร่วมเพื่อเรียนรู้กัน преждеที่เราจะเริ่มการพูดคุยกัน เป็นภูมิใจของเราที่เราได้ผู้นำวอค她是 Association Taiwan Nurses ฉันมีความ忙แต่ฉันได้รับเวลาเพื่อเข้าร่วมเราแล้วเราอยากให้เราได้ให้คำแนะนำเปิดดังนั้น ดร.วอค ขอ
โอเคขอบคุณหวัดดีทุกคนผู้เชิญ ดร.ซูเซน ซางผู้นำของ Division Nursing โรงพยาบาลจังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์และ ดร.แซสมัน ผู้กำกับเทคนิคพยาบาลของ Ministry of Public Health Thailand คุณผู้หญิงและผู้ชายในฐานะของ Association Taiwan Nurses ฉันอยากให้ฉันขอขอบคุณที่ฉันได้ได้ชวนฉันให้ได้แสดงคำแนะนำเปิดในวันนี้正如你们知道โลกถูกการพิมพ์ทำให้เป็นการพิมพ์จาก COVID-19 จากเดือนเดิมจนถึงสิ้นเดือนกรุงผู้คนกว่า 10 ล้านถูกพิมพ์และกว่าครึ่งล้านตายจาก COVID-19 ในไทยจาก SARS ใน 2003 ระบบการดูแลสุขภาพและการดำเนินการทางการในการตอบสนองเร็วและในการต่อสู้ эффектив กับการพิมพ์这项努力ได้รับ了很多的赞誉จากความคิดเห็นของคนต่างๆแต่เราไม่มีความสุขเพราะผู้คนมากมายในโลกยังคงอยู่ในความเสี่ยงสูงและกลัวการพิมพ์และแม้กระทั่งตายเกี่ยวกับการไม่สามารถใช้ PPE และพยาบาลในเริ่มต้นของการพิมพ์ในเดือน february Association Taiwan Nurses เริ่มทำงานกับอีกหลาย association ในไทยเพื่อขอร้องจากรัฐในการ推迟หรือถึงจบการประชุมใหญ่เพื่อป้องกันการแตกของระบบการดูแลสุขภาพเพื่อสนับสนุนสำหรับพยาบาลและสุขภาพของพยาบาลและสุขภาพ我们也要求สถานการณ์สุขภาพและระบบการดูแลสุขภาพให้ได้สุขภาพของ PPE งานพยาบาลและคุณค่างานดำเนินการของ association такжеจะใช้ เพื่อเพิ่มความเป็นของพยาบาลแบ่งปันความประสบการณ์และรับรู้ผลประโยชน์ของพยาบาล此外เราจะ收集故事และภาพที่จะ发表และการรับรู้จะมีการจัดในเดือนอักรายสำหรับพยาบาลที่กำลังดูแลผู้พยาบาล COVID-19 ด้วยโอกาสเหล่านี้ฉันอยากให้ฉัน再一次แสดงความรู้สึกความรักแก่ทุกพยาบาลทั่วโลกและแสดงให้เห็นบทบาทสำคัญของพยาบาลระหว่างการพิมพ์เราเป็นพยาบาลเราสุขใจในการปกป้องสุขภาพทั่วโลกวันนี้ผ่านการพูดคุยกันระหว่างไทยและไทยฉันเชื่อว่าผู้เข้าร่วมคงได้รับ很大จากความรู้และความ分享 вместе เราสามารถชนะการต่อสู้กับการพิมพ์ COVID-19 ท้ายท้ายฉันหวังว่าการพูดคุยกันจะมีความสำเร็จขอบคุณมาก
ขอบคุณใช่ขอบคุณ ดร.วอค ฉันรู้สึกประทับฉันเชื่อเราเราเป็นพยาบาลเราเป็นผู้ช่วยโอเคใช่ดังนั้นวันต่อไปคุณเป็นผู้นำของ Division Nursing ของ Ministry of Public Health Thailand และให้คำแนะนำ Division Nursing 事实上เป็นการสนับสนุนที่สำคัญมากพวกเขามีการสนับสนุนเรามากหลายอย่างของเราตอนที่เราอยู่ในไทยดังนั้นขอเชิญคุณคุณซีรีมาให้คำแนะนำขอคุณคุณซีรีมาหวัดดี
หวัดดีหวัดดี ดร.นินะ
ใช่ดีที่ได้เห็นคุณ
ดีวันหลังค่ะคุณชายผู้เชิญและทุกคนเป็นคนที่ดีและเป็นความสุขที่ได้รับการพูดคุยกันฉันรู้สึกความสำเร็จของการพิมพ์ COVID-19 ในไทยซึ่งเป็นการที่ดีสำหรับเราแต่ฉันอยากให้ขอบคุณที่จังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์โรงพยาบาล โรงพยาบาลและดร.นินะ ที่เป็นการพูดคุยกันสำหรับพยาบาล Ministry of Public Health เป็นหน้าที่สำคัญของการตอบสนอง COVID-19 ในไทยและ Division Nursing 同时也是หน้าที่สำคัญของพยาบาลระหว่างการพิมพ์ที่สร้าง中心พยาบาลสำหรับ COVID-19 ที่เป็นการต่อสู้ในการสนับสนุนและทุกพยาบาลในโรงพยาบาลด้วย Ministry of Public Health 行动แรกของ中心คือการดำเนินงานพยาบาลเพื่อให้แน่ใจความสำคัญ 1. จำนวนพยาบาลคือการดูแล 2. ความสามารถต้องมีการกำหนดและ 3. ไม่พยาบาลไม่ได้พิมพ์ในช่วงเวลาเราได้รับการรู้ของโรคระบาดและโรคระบาดเช่น SARS บัมและไวโบรัสแต่การพิมพ์ COVID-19 ฉันและพนักงานได้รับโอกาสที่จะเรียนรู้จากไทยในการสนับสนุนหลักการพยาบาลและความรู้此外ฉันมีอีกหนึ่งหลักของการตอบสนองดังนั้นนี่คือโอกาสและการร่วมมือของการพิมพ์หลังจากจัดส่ง M.O.U. วิทยาโรงพยาบาลจังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์ไทยและ Division Nursing Ministry of Public Health Thailand ฉันหวังว่าการพูดคุยกันของหลักการพยาบาลและความสำคัญของพยาบาลในการต่อสู้ COVID-19 คงจะมีความหมายของการพิมพ์ท้ายท้ายการแบ่งปันความรู้ที่จะให้ความสมบูรณ์ของความคาดหวังของคุณขอบคุณและสนุกการพูดคุยกันที่สนใจสำหรับพยาบาลขอบคุณมาก
ขอบคุณและเราสุขใจที่มีคุณอยู่กับเราและเพราะนี่เป็นความประสบการณ์ที่ดีสำหรับเราในการทำงานด้วย Division Nursing โอเคขอบคุณสอง VIP ตอนนี้เราจะเริ่มการพูดคุยกันวันนี้เรา有两个发言人 发言人第一个是Dr.ซูเซน คุณเป็นผู้นำของ Division Nursing ของโรงพยาบาลจังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์คุณเป็นผู้กำกับเทคนิคพยาบาลของ Division Nursing ของ Ministry of Public Health Thailand และทุกคนคุณมี 30 นาทีเพื่อจะนำเสนอ Power Point ดังนั้น Q&amp;A จะมีสอง发言人ดังนั้นตอนนี้ฉันอยากชวน ดร.ซูเซน ซางเพื่อเริ่มการพูดคุยกันและประเด็นของเธอคือหลักการพยาบาลของพยาบาลในการต่อสู้ COVID-19 ซูเซนขอ
ดีวันหลังทุกคนฉันซูเซนจากโรงพยาบาลจังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์และวันนี้ฉันเป็นความสุขที่จะแบ่งปันความประสบการณ์ของเราในจังหวะและเราได้ 10 โรงพยาบาลอย่างต่างๆและเราได้ 3800 พนักงานพยาบาลและวันนี้ฉันจะแบ่งปันความประสบการณ์จากโรงพยาบาลเมมและวันนี้เราจะมีวิธีที่เราดูวิทยาลักษณ์จากรัฐและ также แนะนำระบบ HIX ของโรงพยาบาลจังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์และฉัน такжеจะแนะนำ ทีมต่างๆวิธีที่เราจัดการในการต่อสู้กับ COVID-19 และ такжеเราจัดการ ถึงห้องอิสโลชั่นไม่ว่าในสถานที่พยาบาลหรือในสถานที่ระบาดพวกเราก็จะ提供นักเรียนให้การเรียนรู้และเรา也有政策สำหรับมัสและเรา也有照顾สำหรับพนักงานพยาบาลและทุกพนักงานอื่นๆ之类的จากเดือน february เรา每天早上2:00 เราจะมีข่าว จากดร.ชิน 他是中心疾患中心และเขาและทีมของเขาเราจะบอกทั่วประเทศเกี่ยวกับข่าวใหม่และทุกคำแนะนำสำคัญสำหรับเราดังนั้นเราจะนำข่าวกลับไปให้ทีมของเรา และดร.ชินบอก 事实上ดูในช่วงเดือนที่แล้วฉันคิดว่าคุณคิดว่าสิ่งสำคัญที่สุดคือความเชื่อมั่นกันเพราะผู้คนต้องบอกความจริงและเชื่อ другกัน และไม่แค่แบบนี้ทำให้กันกันสำหรับอะไรที่ต่างดังนั้น这就是我们成功ในการควบคุมทุกการพิมพ์ COVID-19 ในไทยและจนถึงวันที่ 1 เจ้าเราได้ 447 กรณี positive และเจ็ด病人ตายและคุณ可以看到แต่ 55 คือการซื้อจากที่รักษาหัวเราะใหญ่จากประเทศนอกและโรงพยาบาลจังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์ในจังหวะไทยและจนถึงตอนนี้เราได้ 19 กรณี confirmed ในประเทศของเราและหัวเราะใหญ่ที่ดูแลอยู่ในโรงพยาบาลจังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์และฉันจะแบ่งปันอะไรที่เราทำในช่วงเดือนที่แล้ว首先我想介绍โรงพยาบาลจังหวะคริสต์แกรนด์ระบบ HIX ระบบการพิมพ์ผู้กำกับเป็นผู้กำกับและเราได้ทีมอาชญากรต่างๆสำหรับทีมดำเนินการ基本上是สำหรับทีมการควบคุมการพิมพ์และเราได้ผู้กำกับพยาบาลติดต่อทีมจากเดือน february และสำหรับทีมการดูแลแพทย์พวกเขามีที่จะพูดเกี่ยวกับการดูแลแพทย์และสำหรับทีมการจัดการฉันต้องบอกว่า他们是他们是ดีใจและพวกเขาสามารถสร้างอะไรที่เราต้องการในเวลาสั้นและเรา也有ทีมการจัดการที่จะพูดเกี่ยวกับวิธีที่จะควบคุมประตูทั้งหมดและทีมการจัดการที่พูดเกี่ยวกับด้านการใช้พลังงานเพราะเป็นสิ่งสำคัญมากสำหรับพนักงานและทีมการจัดการ такжеเป็นสิ่งสำคัญมาก 就像ดร.วอค บอกว่าความสัมพันธ์เป็นสิ่งสำคัญมากและวิธีที่เราต้องการวิธีที่เราสามารถหาเป็นสิ่งสำคัญมากโดยเฉพาะคำพูดจากฝ่ายหน้าผู้ดูแลและสำหรับการจัดการ基本上就是关于การจัดการและ因为我们有不同的医院ดังนั้นเรา也有ทีมการจัดการ事件และ事实上ทุกคนสามารถ知道之前的新年 是今年的1月 以及我们有第一次会议因为我们知道新的 COVID-19 疾病以及根据 SARS 的经验我们知道非常有可能我们不会没有足够多的 masks 所以我会向你展示之前休假我们有根据记忆我们开始买东西以及然后所有的医生在病区我们开始制作มัส自己以及我们不得不尝试以及制作 PPT 对人们以及然后这就是我们开始准备以及我们想象事实上我收到了电话从护理护士以及她告诉我我们可能没有足够多所以我就回到医院以及我也打电话给职员他们住得很近医院所以我们回来了你可以看到这张照片你可以看到不只是他们自己回来但是他们也带回他们的孩子和孩子们他们都回来帮助我们 所以在假期的5天 我们做了 更多的2000个 masks 以及这是足够对我们那个时间的情况以及我们也有开始一个网站 SOPs 用于 COVID-19 Intranet ของโรงพยาบาล你可以看到不同的团队当他们有新的政策或新 SOPs 我们会放在 Intranet 所有的工作人员无论谁需要他们都会会进入 SOP 以及他们可以开始提供临床的部分你可以看到最有价值 SOP 是从医疗团队然后另一个是对于 access main entrance 我们也有不同的政策因为政府的政策变了那我们就会改变我们的政策以及对于会议我们有很多会议你可以看到这就是同一个会议室左边是ทีมการจัดการ 在2月5日 你可以看到很多职员我们一起以及我们开始谈论我们需要什么以及我们有多少在那个时间你可以看到我们仍然很拥挤有一些戴着口罩有一些没有口罩但之后 直到4月 那我们有社交距离从政府所以同一个会议室在那个时间我们只能看到 少于10个人 在这里我们谈论 access control management 以及之前所以我们也有你可以看到左边是医疗团队我们有我们可以分享我们的信息以及一些重要的讨论可以通过 M+ 组织以及这里是关于人员管理例如ทีมที่ใช้ประโยชน์以及我也加入医疗中心的医生在整个台湾 26个我们几乎每天分享在我们的医院以及我们分享经验给别人以及我们分享我们有什么问题以及它也是很重要的对评估风险你可以看到我们有多种语言的评估风险关于交通休息和接触历史和群组信息以及这里我觉得你可以发现因为这些是来自泰语以及这是来自印度语因为在中国我们有很多外国投资者以及我们也有一些外国的帮助所以对于不同的语言我们可以很容易查看他们的 TOCC 以及对于 access control management 对于 main entrance 我们有超过10个 entrance 对于我们的 campus 但是在 COVID-19 我们关闭所有门除非我们只有仅剩 main entrance 和 emergency department 我们 We everyone come to the hospital, we were asking about the travel history and also respiratory symptoms. If they had any of these, we would redirect them to emergency room. And they are not allowed to uh come into our hospital. And for uh we also have uh set alcohol dispenser at all the checkpoints for hand washing. So everyone wants to enter the hospital need to have body temperature monitor. And also uh hand washing and also wear face masks. And then they can come into the hospital. And for screening um also because in the beginning, we all know the uh virus is start from Wuhan. And in Taiwan, we have health, national health insurance um system. So we put on the health insurance card, we can check their travel history from that. So you also can see nurse, some nursing staff, they also are in the entrance to help to do the screening. In the beginning, we only wear mask, but later because the severity of the uh disease. Um so we have start to wear the personal protective equipment. And then since um every day um some um patients, they may come in different times. So we also heard the voice from the frontline um care workers, they told us. Because for example, cancer patient with, they come every day um for radiotherapy. Hemodialysis patient, they come every other day for uh hemodialysis. And family visitors for ICU, they almost come every day. And hospital staff also. And we, because we don't have to check their um travel history each time. So we start to invent a lot of different stickers for different people. They can easily quick to enter the hospital main entrance. But they still have to be checked for their TOCC in the different division. Especially, we also see children and pregnant women and patient with wheelchair. We have another fast um pass for these patients. And we also have family visiting time. Before um before the pandemic, we have um visiting uh for the isolation uh like ICU or respiratory care units. Um it's each day for two times and each times for two persons. But during the pandemic part, we have reduced the visitor uh time to one. And even um since March, we did, we don't allow any person to do visiting. Unless they come for um discharge or immediate to the patient, the hospital. Or they are coming to sign the invasive uh permission consent form. And even though, right, as you can see, we check all the their um records in the TOCC. And also um it's different to other time because we, because the be, family cannot come. So we have to start to use telephone counseling to tell the patient's progress. Okay. And policy for masks, we have um in the beginning, we don't have enough masks. But later on, the government have uh give our masks. So we have have set staff and caregivers who will stay at the bedside twenty four hours. They can uh have one mask each day. And otherwise, if they need more, for example, the nurse, maybe they have um blood splitting, so they can, they need another one, it's okay, they can have another one, but just have to write down all their name. And then to make sure the masks who take took it. And then for caregivers and visitors, TOCC. In the beginning, we have paper recording for um the visiting uh person. Their uh they, their relationship with the patient and their TOCC and even their um trip uh respiratory symptoms or not. And then because if they have any um symptoms happens or they don't feel comfortable. We will redirect them to the emergency care. Or they will change the um the caregivers. And later, um then for the informative um staff, they help us to um design this all back to the um computerized. So right now, we all have the records into our nursing records. So if any patients, they uh finally be confirmed. Then we can easily to trust any visitors or any person or even staff who have contact with the confirmed patients. And right now, we also have invent and create the um visitor appoint appointment. They can make appointment when they are coming to visit. Uh but they also can uh fielding out all the TOCC information before they come into the hospital. And also, we have a company cards for caregivers stay twenty four hours in in the bedside. And we check their um TOCC and then also check their body temperature. And then we change the stickers and they can easily to enter our main transit um doors. We also encourage them, don't come in person visit, but they especially, they can use video chat. So you can see these patients, um she share um her situat- her condition and her feeling through the computer. And you also can see her thumbs up to just to um I think to share to tell the family um she is okay in the hospital. We also redesign our emergency room. We have two separate um zone, one for respiratory zone, the other for non-respiratory zone. And we have two different groups, um healthcare workers to taking of two different division. And we don't, they don't, at that period of time, they don't eat together, they don't have meet each other. And so in case if we really happen some accidents in one parts, we still have another group of um healthcare care, take cares. Okay. And you can see here, this is the before, we can, the emergency room can very easy to come through and then to the whole hospital. But at this time, we just close the here, so all the emergency parts, they are isolated. And for the triage, also move outside to the hospital. And you can see in the beginning, we, our uh staff, they invented this. And then later, we um keep thinking about on the uh progressing and then improvement. So finally, they invented this one. So the ideas is from the healthcare team, from doctors and from the nurses. But still have to thank you for the logistic team. I say they are very quick and very fast to uh build up this. So then you can see the nursing staff can be safe and easily to take the blood um collection. And this is the effort after parts for the ABC area. And for the ninety three medical ward, there, there was uh five airborne infectious isolation room only. But then during this period of time, we built and rearranged. So you can see here before was twenty beds. Um and right now is ten beds, a single um bedroom for COVID nineteen suspicious suspicious patients. And here was um forty beds and right now was ten single um room for pneumonia patients. Okay. And like here, they also, the logistic team helped us to build up the room and everything in less than um three days. And also people where the staff where the PPE very um safe. And I want to show even we have um si- single rooms, but you know patients this time for COVID nineteen. Some are very um, I shouldn't, I should say they might have some symptoms, but they are not very severe. For example, we have a very old lady and she, she got infected by her son. His son is the first confirmed case in whole Taiwan. And here I want to share because she stayed in the hospital, but you can see the doctor and the nurse. They, they go into there every day just to uh you know chat with the patient and still accompany with her for exercising, you know. In one person stay in one room is very lonely, especially if this old lady is over eighty. Um so her um situation is not so bad, but still, we are concerned about disorientation parts. And then also help for the uh prevent for the fall. So that's how we, it's really different, but the nurses have to do a lot of listening and supportive things for the patient. For the medical ICU, we also build up uh some new um isolation room. So you can see in this area, we have the single um isolated room. And here is not. So we also have two different groups um working in two different areas. And in just this is how we learn, um we don't talk too much to each other. We have just had to stay in our own self team and take care of the patients. And here you can see for the uh isolation room, we have, we have to make sure, like here, we have all the steps. So when nurse on and the doctor, they want to enter, they will see this and then prepare themselves. And here we have mirror to make sure they all wear it okay. Doctor Dill is the, is, he is a very senior infection control disease um doctor. He always remind us, we have to taking care of ourselves first before we entering to to the isolation room. So you can see we, after we wear, we still have to look after each other to see if we are prepared enough. And for the pediatric part, we have some kids coming back from the foreign country. And some may have um relatives coming back from foreign country. So if they got respiratory symptom, they come to the hospital, we also taking care of the kids. And then there are some different experiences because um even we have family member accompany with the little kids. But the little kids never see their parents, like for example, their mom aware for the O P P E. So it's, it's really her mom or not her mom, sometimes still, we have to make sure the kids hearts. And we have another campus, we have ten single individual room um there. So we also, you can see, we um um staff are very working hard. And after patient discharge, we use this um machine to do cleaning. So the cleaning person also make their efforts to the care. Some special units discussion. For example, for this time, we have built um the uh one new negative pressure operation room. And then of according to our policy, if it's not uh emergency, we will just wait fourteen days. After they re um coming back from foreign country. But if it's emergency, we have to reorganize them to this ne- negative um pressure operation room to taking care of. And also, we have um suspicious COVID nineteen pregnant um patients um from back from foreign country. So then we, we write a new SOP for this. If they will stay in ninety three wards for um spontaneous um delivery. Or they need a C-section to the uh temporarily negative pressure operation. And we also discuss about uh how we arrange for the newborns also. So these are all very different, we, we haven't been discussed before um this time. So and also for hemodialysis room, we have uh outpatient area and inpatient area. So you can see we, we made a I uh different um isolation parts, not isolation part, the separate door to make sure um people in in the outpatient clinic here. And also, we fix all the patient in the same bed. So every time uh she or he came, he will stay in the same bed. So if any um cases feel uncomfortable and we have to trust, then it's easy for us to track. And also for psychiatric patient, because this time, we also have some patients stay in the psychiatric ward and also come from the emergency room. But because they are suspect for uh COVID nineteen. So we also set a new uh SOP. If the patient, psychiatric patient stay in the ninety three isolation room. The psychiatric nurse and the psychiatric doctor will come and also combine care team. And also, Changhua County Health Bureau, they are very concerned about the nurse aides of our chronic um nursing station. And so they came and to do inspection for, so we have to show on, we, we do have educate all the nurse aides. And we also have monitor their skills for hand washing and also other important skills. And we all make a record, so it will be uh come a more safe for the county to see everybody is okay. And here I will discuss about nursing staffing. Um we have twice a day, in the morning and in the afternoon. And then we will discuss uh what kind of beds we need and also how we, what kind of nurse we need. At the, at that time, we do have to manpower utilization in the whiteboard every day, different shift. We have to talk about how many patient we have and how many nurses we need. So you can see the manpower for the isolation wards. We have during the daytime, we have one to take care of two to three. And then for the evening time, we may have one to take care of three to four. For the regular wards, we have one to six to seven patients. And then during the evening and night shift, we do have um take care, one nurse have to take care ten to twelve. So they have different um patient ratio. And and we also train a lot of patients and it's, it's nice to have people to be volunteer to the isolation room. And we also have some nurses to SS control screening manpower. And also, like I say, we have some um staff, they coming back from the fa- foreign country. Or they do have um relatives coming back from the foreign country. If they have some um symptoms, they might take the sick, sick days for three to one week. But also, according to Taiwan policy, some of them may have to have fourteen days off. And also, some nurses, they have young kids or senior um parent at home. So we do have parental leave, also we also have to help that. And this is the manpower scheduling. So you can see if there are em- empty, um the red line, red words means we have to um um to have different words uh help the nurses to come to the isolation room. And we also have e-learning for all employees, including staff and nursing students and medical students and volunteers. And there are some required um classes to um let them know the information. I, I also will share, um actually, we have the nursing students uh in, in isolation room before. But during this time, we re- reschedule them. So we don't have nursing students in emergency department and also emergency, eh, also in ninety three wards. So you can see even at that period of time, we have education for the newcomers, new staff. And to train and to practice, let them got the feeling. And also, we have um cruise and airplane um coming back from foreign country. So the government uh asking for a medical center, we do have to have on-call staffing for the uh if they need to do some help. So we have education and training. So uh the head nurse talk about how to aware the education them, they, they, they do have to practice. And for the travel health uh destination, the government talked about. So you can see, we have in different stage, we have different uh requirement. So since February, we have healthcare staff are limited to go abroad. But still, many um nurses or healthcare uh staff, they still need to go out. So when they come back, they have to follow these three different um arrangement. So we also have new reporting system to uh self-health management. So we have to report every day for TOCC history and also our temperature, body temperature. If you do have um TOCC, then you have to report twice a day. And if you have, don't have any symptoms, you report one, once in one day. And stress for self-health management, I think this is still keep going up. Even right now, we don't have so severe situation, but we still keep the body temperature monitoring every day and also hand hygiene. And for the limited number for the groups uh for the meeting, and then we have limited under one person. So here are the head nurse meetings, we, we just have to sit very far away. And also for the eating, so in, in our eating room, uh discussion room, you can see we install transplastic material to limited person-to-person transmission. And finally, we also have caring for employee uh caring team. We have occupational head uh health nurse and then also pastoral care and psychology counseling. Um our uh occupational health nurse, they will call all the, from all the people stay at home for the isolation or for the quarantine or self-management. So they call to, to listen to them any needs or they also have some uh um pre- uh stress scale. If the uh stress is higher, they will refer to the counseling. And we also have uh some uh activity for kickboxing or yoga, etc. We also launch a project, um it says, I am proud of staying at home. Because at that time, unless we come into the work, we stay at home. So they have um pre, pre, um they have asking for activities, um staff they do at home. And they can uh post all the uh photos, so you can see uh our staff stay home planting, cooking or sewing or they are painting, etc. And then finally, we also have set up temporary dormitory for this. Um because some staff, they, they can come to the hospital to work, but they say because they are afraid of, because they have senior uh parents at home, so they want to have temporary stay in the dormitory. So we also set up that. We also have, as a Christian hospital, we have morning prayer um for ourselves or even the pastors to come ourselves. And we also receive a lot of um email letters to our um to, letters to our hospital. We send all the letters to the staff to tell everybody they are doing very well, to encourage them and thankful. And we also, according to the SARS experience, we know it's very stressful for nurses to working in a nursing station, especially frontline nurses. So we put on all the, it's like a diary, so they can write down whatever they wants to write and to release their stress. But also record our nursing history in the year of twenty twenty. Here are some um pressing letters from um the, the community. But also, we have uh like the old lady, I said, uh he, her son died. But after he discharged from the hospital, he feel so lonely. So we have a nurse, uh she came, went to their house, his, her house to accompany with her. So we also are very thankful for her. And all confirmed patient, actually, all uh safe and discharged on the end of April. So a lady feel um cherished and also thank for the hospital, so send a lot of hot pieces to us. So we also share to the um our staff. In conclusion, staff is without um doubt, is the most precious um resource for any health facility. Mainpower, how we train and sharing and also encourage people. And to reschedule, to scheduling all the manpower to different situation and different wards is very important. And also adequate supplies are also very, very, very important. So what uh voice from the frontline nurses or staff, we will report and discuss in all the different uh HIC teams. And as a leader, we have need to communicate transparent the information to all the frontline person. Support them and listen to them. And in like, protect the healthcare workers is to reserve hospital parts than to save life. Here is the words from Nanning Gao. Uh she said from the uh, from the Bible. And then we all know this year is the year for nurses and midwifery. And we also know, like the, like the said, door said, whom should I send and who will go for us? As a nurse, we will say, here I am and please send me. So this is the sharing for today, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for Suzanne, because a lot of the information. So since she's been very hurry. Anyway, if any question, we can discuss um later. So the next speaker, I would like to invite um Dr. Sasamum from Thailand. Her topic is role and response of nurse, nurses during COVID nineteen outbreak, lesson learned from Thailand. Hey, please.
Okay. And then uh my presentation, it is, this is a full screen right now?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, oh, yeah. My session is all roles and response of the nurses during COVID nineteen outbreak, lesson learned from Thailand. And then um the outline is about like role and responsibility of the nurses at an organization. For us, is on the nursing division, Ministry of Public Health. And then role of the nurses and individual healthcare provider. And then roles and response of the government as a country leaders, and then it will be a conclusion. Uh let's begin with um the statistics just a little bit. This one just um on the left-hand side, it just says about um how many infectious cases in Thailand. But this data is quite a bit old, is on um June fifteen. And then, but from now on, on July the second yesterday, uh our uh infected cases is zero in the country for more than like about thirty eight days. And then uh the cases we found is only in the state quarantine. But for the nurse infected with uh COVID nineteen, now it just reduce and the number is not increased anymore. Just about like forty five and then that's it. And then for the role and responsibility of the nurse as a nursing organization. Because we are nursing division and now we are the government nursing agency. And then we do work with our chief nurse officer in the province. As and you see in the, in the organization chart, we work, we do have like work like I am in network. And by a colo- uh local collaboration, we also work as an international network and in um collaboration between uh who. As I mentioned, that we do have like um uh do a collaboration and network uh within the country using our chief nurse officer network and then uh the uh between like international organizations. And then uh during the COVID nineteen outbreak, what, what do we do? First, we are set up the nursing collaboration center for COVID nineteen. Then we establish and implement measures for managei- for management and caring of the COVID nineteen cases. For example, guideline on nursing manpower management in COVID nineteen situation. Prepare and disseminate knowledge and practice related to COVID nineteen caring. Online conference channel for listening and Q and A message board to see uh what is problem that our nursing staff facing and how can we as a collaboration center can help them or um support them. And then for manpower planning and management, we do have like um we uh launch the policy on um support to designated A I R award or the unit by pooling experiences, nurses staff and team staff locate locations. And then we uh encourage safety measure, for example, provide adequate uh P P E and other necessary protective equipment, uh what arrangement, working hours and daily list assessment to make sure that our staff will be safe. Also, we save for the patient too. And then we do clarify M and E, um for example, nursing COVID nineteen data platform. That one we monitor on how many staff that we use and then how many infectious cases that we do monitor. And then online conference to see what is going on and how can we solve the problem, clarify um every week. Uh the collaboration center that we set, we are, our committee will meet like once a week to see and then uh to update situation and how can help with the nurses. And also, we do construct for the nurses psychological quality throughout the fight against COVID nineteen and after fight for recovery support. For example, clarify for mental health support by Department of Mental Health, like this picture. And then we do have like national social recognition, like the white belt hero and heroine because of uh the patients and the people in our community do recognize um what our uh healthcare provider as a hero in they um suffer. And then we do have like policy announcements on offering serious one position for the M O P H staff. We got have like thirty eight hundred something for contract staff. And then seventy five hundred for new graduates in the nursing profession could be clarify a reward for them that taking care of the COVID nineteen patients. And then we do have a clarify many um financial support uh to make sure that our staff and then our population get some uh clarify reimbursement for them. And then finally, we do um set a policy on new normal in nursing services. Uh we focus on uh two areas, in the hospital and then in the community setting. We focus on two areas in the hospital and then in the community setting. For the nursing service in the hospital, we do car fly alliance for the follow up appointment. The queue to see the doctors, tele nursing. And then we do focusing on social distance IP principles. And then have like spinning by taking temperatures, ask them to wear face masks, hand washing, something stuff. And then for the inpatient, we do have like set the word and then the service using the IC techniques. And then now we do a lens have like a visiting time for patients. And then we do a lens for a new what do we call sanitaries and then cleaning in the hospital, something like that. And then for the community setting, we do have like a link, the home visit like a new one using technology. And then we do emphasize on IP techniques. We do need some car by a screening using a temperatures, health educations and college them to understand new normals in their life right now. Like using our wearing face mask, hand washing, hand hygiene. And then we do a screening for the risky population in our community using health village health volunteer. And then we have like do encourage nurse to do apply new normals for nurses. Like washing, no, take a bath and then change that clothes before they go back home after they come to work. And then we emphasis on five moments of hand washing. They have to use alcohol or gel and ready to use that. And then wear face mask every time that we work on duties. And then we will not wear our uniform when we go out to the public. And then the roles and responsible responsibility of the nurses at an individual healthcare provider. Just don't panic, be prepared and ready for knowledge and skill. Our collaboration center, we have like send our infographic and video tips on IP technique. PPE varying and then how to take care of the COVID nineteen. Something like that, like the picture that you see on the left hand side. And then you have to follow recommended measures, have like PPE varying correct technique for varying PPE, watch a length man and working hours. And then daily list assessment. And then they have to do car fly a monitor and evaluation on setting by setting our data to us to see what's going on right now in the in the areas. And then now roles and responsible of the government as a country leaders. I think that one is we focus on leadership and single commander since this is an outbreak. So I think is our prime minister take care of that issue quite well. We do have like one centralized order and control. And then our government, even in the MOPH and others ministry, they deliver the same message. And then we have a clear policy announcement and position like prevent and control to realize zero infection. And then we do have like emergency decree and curfew. After the high peak of the outbreak, I think is around the end of March two thousand twenties. We do have like self isolation and designate state quarantine. And then we encourage public awareness and ask people to collaborations. And then we do have a support and limited measures such as financial support. And then we mobilize the existing healthcare staff and healthcare facility by use healthcare professional and village health volunteer come and work cover screening for our new cases in the communities. And then we designated hospital both public and private in order to share the ward to admit the patients and do a car fly laboratory check to see who's got infected. And then we do public communication, have like daily updates on country COVID nineteen situation report to make the public awareness of how serious this infection was. And then we do a multi sexual collaboration like a public private sector and civil society and community participation. All the people stay willing to take responsible to of this infection. In conclusion, Thailand effectively hammered down the COVID nineteen by minimize immediate stress on healthcare worker and critical care resources. Allow time to scale up healthcare worker search capacity and other necessary equipments like PPE and face mask supply and then the private sector also join and then help the government by distributing all this equipment to the hospital and then in the society as well. Key success factors include single commander, multi sexual collaborations, multiple measures, public communication and community participation. I think that's will be also my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Actually, today we have three the professor from university to join us. One is Professor Rai, the dean of a school of nursing of Walela University in Thailand. And the other one is Dr. Fitri, director of master of nursing program of UMY University, Muhammadia Jajakata in Indonesia. And the other one, the third one is Ms. Katina. And she the chairman of the Korean Development Center of UKH Surakata, also from Indonesia. My question is, my question is, is that because three of you, you are the like the very important role in the university. So I want to ask a question for three reactors. Because you are all the director, so you are in the high level and you have some of policy for the educational systems. So what is the core competency you think is crucial to educate and train your students as a professional and humanity nurses? So that they can commit to their career while they taking off the patient. And during the pandemic, any other specific component you think you can add to the core competency? So can I invite the first reactor from Walela University, Dr. Rai? Could you respond this question?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I I am Ura Jereprapan, dean of School of Nursing Walela University. Before answer the question, may I appreciate the work both Thai and Taiwan nurse? And then I I answer the question. The first, the core competency is crucial to educate and train my student as professional and humanity nurse in my faculty called the smart nurse. It consists of four characteristic which are first clinical reasoning practice. We develop the student to be able to understand empirical evidence. Use deep pathophysiology to explain associated nursing practice. And the second, the innovation creation. It is important if competency to care various target population and various important issue such as the prevention of communicable disease, accident prevention. And the third, the effective professional communication. It is the accurate, credible and appropriate content communication be clear, sensible, consistency to the right media and take into account to ability of the audience. And the last, nursing practice with the human heart. It means that the verbal expression, nonverbal such as patient expression, express an understanding of individual difference and understanding context and cultural diversity. It will help support the nurse practice to achieve expected result. And during the pandemic, the specific component we will add to the competency composed of the skill in nursing management in crisis situation. Using knowledge of event modification of nursing practice under the fast changing circumstance under empirical evidence. And encourage them to proud in professionalism, self specific prevention precaution for communicable disease. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very clearly, the smart nurse. Yeah, I remember. The next, and I would like to invite one of, also one of our MOU University in Indonesia and Dr. Fitri from UMY. Would you also respond the question I asked? Because you are the director of the the university nursing department. So you, what do you think, what is the core competency you think is crucial to educate and train your students in Indonesia? And make them more of professional and humanity to take care of the patient, particularly in the COVID nineteen periods. Fitri, Dr. Fitri.
Hi.
Okay.
It's really nice to meet you, Dr. Sasamun, Dr. Susan. Thank you very much that you inviting us to join with this very fruitful discussion in webinar. So, yeah, in COVID nineteen, we have a lot of sacrificeation. Especially as a healthcare provider. But according to our professional in Indonesia, actually to at the core competencies, actually we have a five profile for the nursing student, for bachelor nursing student as a healthcare provider and then communicator. And then as educator and health promoter, manager and leader. And the last one, as a researcher. But I would like to add two core competencies. Actually, the most important in this kind of situation is the communication skill. The first one is communication skill. Why? Because you know as a nurse, we are constantly communicating with college as well as patient and their families, right? In addition, we also provide nurse to nurse communication in the form of reports. And this another reason, nurse communication maybe feel better for accuracy, safety and even legal issues. Because of this, possessing good nurse communication skills is extremely important in this situation. And actually, there are many communication skill that can develop to our successful career. Like for example, on how we improve our non verbal communication, we need to really understand others based on their culture, their background or education, something like that. And then to be active listening also. And on how to improve improve our personal relationship. Of course, this is a need to practice it. You can learn to show care, compassion and kindness while obtaining and providing information to the patient. And you also must be able to demonstrate the level of interest in the collaborative relationship. And then also, we need to inspire the trust. So always keep our word, never make promises you may not be able to keep. When you are with the patient, be present and listen to the patient. And then show compassion, this is also very important as the one of the communication skill that we need to develop. Cultural awareness, every patient is unique, right? They they may come from different culture, from different countries. And in Indonesia, the the most important because we have more than three hundred and fifty culture. So you can imagine, even me and my husband, we have a different culture. So sometimes I don't understand what he mean because he will use his own dialect, something like that. And then educating patient, the nurse communication skill is the heart of nursing. You must be able to explain the disease process, the medication and self care techniques to the patient and their family. And also written communication, be careful. Because sometimes we can see that many medical doctor, they just read that we cannot understand what they what they they read they they write in the paper. So also the presentation skill. Nurses in the leadership position are not the only ones who need this skill, right? We need also to be be asked to present to the nurse or other staff member in the small or large scale of community. And then the last one is on how to really understand to practice verbal communication. And the second one, the most important is a collaboration skill. You know that patient care is partly in nursing, right? For the patient who receive the best healthcare possible, nurses must communicate with relevant professional. And also the WHO also mentioned about this. In its multi professional patient safety curriculum guide, acknowledge that effective teamwork in healthcare delivery can have an immediate and positive impact on patient safety. So WHO also also already add that teamwork and coordination help minimize the occurrence of adverse events caused by errors in both communication and an understanding of defined profession. And also, so two core competence in nursing practice. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great. Yeah, very inspired, very inspired. Yeah, inspiration for us. I think that you 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 mentioned very key point, communication and listen. Because I because I think listen, listen for for people's speaking or talking is quite important. Yeah, in Taiwan, you know, the nurse always busy, so most of them might think that they don't have time to listen for the patients, their complaints or whatever, everything. I think in Taiwan, in other countries, same. Because everyone is quite busy, you know, everything is is very quickly. Yeah, but I think listen is very important. We always say, listen, listen to the goal. Yeah, listen, they say like like you got some of your goal, it's quite important. Yeah. Thank you so much, Fitri. And and I, yeah, and I think Katina, Katina, that's a Fitri student, but she she studying. She's studying, she's studying in Taiwan. Yeah, and she came back and now she is also a very good friend. And and I also would like to 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 listen that Katina, what's your opinions? Katina, please.
Actually, I would happy to have my, I think it is my classroom because all of the reactor is my teachers, I think. That I would like, I do agree about what Dr. Rai said and Dr. Putri said. It's really a complete explanation about the core skills of the nursing students that we need when they face some some kinds like a pandemic. But the thing that I would like to add a little about it's all about soft skills, I think. It's about all about the soft skills. Because actually, in this pandemic, we also have a struggling stage with my our students who went to abroad and then they still have to practice there in pandemic situation. So at at that positions, we need to have the good soft skills of our students or our nursing to face the problem. I think about the soft skills here, the students, we should give them about how to adapt and how to face the unexpected conditions. So they can keep their basic skills in a good performance if they have a good mental immunity. I think about it's about a soft skills. And then the other one is that we we see And then the other one is that we we see from our students or that we think that we need to increase and improve in our curriculum is about spirituality. I think the one who have a good spirituality, they will have a good physical performance also to give their heart, their kind heart care to the patient. And I think that's all for for me. I think the other points from Dr. Vitrin and Dr. Urai is really complete for a best or good, a more improving nursing student and nursing care in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, very good. I think that's, I know that because we have cooperation with like Katina or Vitrin. Yeah, you always send the students to our hospital for training, but for because of the pandemic. So this year, this year, the students cannot come, but that's that's where you see. Yeah, we we hope that maybe um end of this year or next year, then we can continue. Yeah, we will, we very very welcome the students from Indonesia, even from Thai to come to our hospital for like the the international corporation and they can have the training in our hospitals. And actually, you know, the students from UMY, they are very, very good, you know, almost the nursing department, they they think the students, they are so lovely, you know, they they do their very, very good job and they study very, very hard. So so the nursing department, yeah, they like, I I I think each of them, including their surgical work of likely other of international, internal work, the the head of nurse, they love, they love them very, very much because they do very good job. Yeah, this is very good. And Katina, Katina supports students because this is the first time, but unfortunately, because of pandemic. So they couldn't come anyway. Don't worry. Yeah, you have the the opportunity. And for Walelak, I hope that because we have the cooperation, you know, M O U, so I hope that in the future. Yeah, Walelak University also can have that undergrad students and come to our hospital for visiting, for training, whatever, we all welcome. Um there is one question they want to, and she or she want to ask Dr. Susan. Then the question is, how about additional income or reward for nurses who treat COVID nineteen? And CCH have any policy for that?
Actually, through the government, we do have um for ten thousand Taiwanese dollars each day for nurses. And then for our hospital, this is through the government, but for our hospital. In, we don't have extra pay at this time, but we do have for the isolation ninety three words. They have a thousand dollars, but it's for each month. Yeah.
So this is a good?
I don't know how to say it's good or not, but but because for the isolation room, the patient ratio is different, but the for the extra pay for the ninety three word is because we start there from the SARS seventeen years ago. It's very dangerous and also people scared at that time. So we have extra pay for ninety three isolation work. Yeah, it's our experience. Yeah, but this time for, like I said, the government's um having every reimbursement for the, no matter you're taking care of confirmed or for suspicious um COVID nineteen case, the nurse can get a reimbursement from that.
Okay, uh we have couple minutes, then we are going to feedback one more question. And the question seems ask who, let me see. What are the nurses do to reach the community, especially in the household? Maybe I think the question that seems to me. Uh May, can you see the the text that stated what is the nurses to Larry? Nurse community especially in houses? I think the meaning is how the nurses are reached to the community, especially the household. And what are the experience in Taiwan and Thai? May, can you answer first and Susan, you you can add some more for the nurses to go to the community, something like that. It's okay? Okay, May.
Yes, uh for us in Thailand, we we have a system that we have car fly home visit. We have two parties involved in this one. Uh first is is uh what do we call is a whole visit um six uh home healthcare uh by the hospital, that is the main one. And then in the health promoting hospital, they do have like cooperate together. And then they have the patients home and list of the patient that with household that they have to go and visit like a home healthcare. We do have like continual continuing of care between hospital and health promotion hospital. We use the nurse as a health promotion hospital and then healthcare volunteers as a hand to reach all the patient in their communities. I think that's all that we work. And then now we have a family care team. This one also support for home visit in the communities. Within each households and in in each village, we do have responsible volunteers and then the nurses who took care of the peoples in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, volunteer. Yeah, we also have volunteer. So, yeah.
Okay, um in Changhua, we also have home care nurses. They still, they go to home, do home visiting and with the family medicine doctors. And before we go, and we will also asking about TOCC information. I think that's how we prepare, what what kind of protective equipment we need when we go to the household. But if the patient, when we ask and then if the patient situation needs to come to the hospital, we might just directly ask them to come to the emergency department. So that's how we do the home visiting. And besides that, like I said, we have some um residents coming back from the foreign country, they do the home contouring or home isolation. They do have, we do have nurses um to call from the government. We have the nurses to call every day to make sure what kind of body temperature they are. If they have some respiratory symptoms or fever, um they will also arrange um the, how to say, the car to take them to the emergency room. The closely in a hospital to taking care of them. So that's why we have done in Taiwan. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any other of question. If no question, I think um today's time is almost up. So thank you very much for all of our good friends from Indonesia, from Thailand, from Myanmar. Thank you so much to join us. So see you. Bye.